All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this next meeting to order.
Derek's cars. When he threw them out.
Mr. O'Rourke, we are gonna start our Planning Commission interviews. We'll go ahead and call up our first candidate. And that would be Ms. Rothenbacher. You can pronounce your name for me if you don't mind. And just go ahead and come up to the stand. And we'll give you just a couple of minutes to introduce yourself. Let us know a little bit about you and why you want to apply for Planning Commission.
Want the other candidate to go to the back room?
Um, I think to be consistent with what we've done with all of our other interviews, that would probably be here.
Are we filling one position or two?
Just one.
Okay.
This is a special.
Yes. Just an open meeting?
But a special city council meeting.
No, it's just, just an interview. I don't think they'd call up.
It's listed as a special city council meeting.
It's a special city council.
It is. Yes.
I'm just telling you. Cory.
All right, go ahead.
I'm Shran Rothenbacher. And just wanted to be on City Council or on Planning Commission. I used to be on it years ago. And had moved away. And now I'm back and just wanna be involved again. And I sell real estate at Keller Williams. And I'll just let you guys ask questions, I guess.
All right, how about for the first interview, we'll start on this side. And the second interview will start going the other way. So we'll start with you, Caitlin.
What is it about the work that you did previously that you are interested in coming back to Planning Commission?
When I was on it previously, the people that were on it were, I guess, unable to move forward. They weren't, we were working on the master plan and, and they were real hesitant on working toward growth and goals and stuff like that. Where now, I think, with what's going on with the new planning, it's really exciting because everyone's really involved in trying to develop the River Quarter and things that will bring growth and development to our town, which I think is really important. And that'll help bring businesses, it'll help bring more people and jobs, which we need.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you for submitting your application. Relative to your background, how do you, what parts of your background and work history and personal experiences do you think helps qualify you to work on the Planning Commission?
I've worked in real estate and development most of my life. Was a real estate investor before I moved to Colorado. And then since I've been here, I've been selling real estate, built a couple houses, helped other people do projects and development.
Okay, thank you. Big John. Thank you. So when, what, what years did you serve on the Planning Commission?
I don't remember. It was probably 15 years ago.
15 years ago, that, that's close enough. So it's been a while.
Yeah.
What do you think the, the, in your letter, you say you'd like to help make the city a more appealing place?
Well, right now, if you talk to any builders or developers, they talk about the difficulty building here relative to some other places. You know, and I, I think that we're coming to a point where it's beginning to get easier to work with some of those issues. I think that the current staff seems to be more receptive to trying to find ways to make things happen instead of just saying no, which is exciting.
Okay, and the, what do you think the role of the, and that's where kind of my question is headed here, is what do you think the role of the Planning Commission is in, in making the, the city more appealing?
Well, I think, you know, by following the rules and the structure that are there and then being able to navigate through that, to come to, I guess, good, reasonable conclusions, makes it easier for development. If we make it easier for development and we're trying to get businesses to come here, you know, a smoother path is gonna make it a better place, right? If you see roadblock after roadblock after roadblock, they're gonna find somewhere it's easier to go.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for putting your application in.
Thanks, John.
Yes, thank you for being here today. We sure appreciate your willingness to be a part of local governance. My question is you, well, I have two. When you talked about the previous Planning Commission that you worked on, that you didn't really see that there's a lot of focus on future growth and goals, what is your vision for the future of Canyon City?
Well, I think pretty much is growth and development. I mean, bringing, raising our tax base, right? Bringing business in here. Giving tax credits, tax incentives to bring business in. And when you do that, I mean, it's going to help generate economic development in our, in our town. And I think that with making the new master plan or, or working toward that helps, you know, it'll, it'll bring our community more diversity, which I think we need.
Okay, and my second question is, how many Planning Commission or City Council meetings have you attended in the last 12 months?
None, because I have been gone.
When did you move back?
I moved back a year ago, but I still worked in Colorado Springs until about two months ago.
Okay, thank you. Mayor?
Hi.
Hi, Preston.
How are you? Is there a time in your life that you sat on, oftentimes, I was on Planning Commission for six years. And there's often times when you have a crowd full, a whole room full of people that probably aren't real happy.
Yes.
Did you ever have a position, did you ever have a position where you had, how did you handle that? How did you feel about it? Because you understand that as Planning Commission, you have the rules and regulations that are already codified and probably the people out there aren't in that much of agreement.
Right.
Did that make you really, did you feel, how did you feel about that? You going comfortable? Could you, could you handle that?
Yeah. I mean, we deal with negotiations every day, right? And people are unhappy, a lot, in some cases. So basically, I try not to personalize any of it. Business is business and personal is personal. So trying to navigate through and just focus on the business portion of it and not letting it get under your skin or whatever, for me, that's the best way for me to handle that.
Are you willing to do, oftentimes, you'll have lots of homework. And it's not a highly paid job, by the way.
Yeah, I know.
In case you noticed that, okay. Do you have time to do that, to really get into it? Because we do have changes coming up, both in the code and stuff like that. Do you really think you've got time to do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, my schedule's pretty, I was working a lot of hours all the time and I was gone all the time. And now I'm back and I'm really just doing real estate and my own stuff.
How would you contrast your life with the rules and regulations that we already have? How would you put that, if you had a regulation or you have things that you have to follow and then you have to make a decision and vote on it, would you feel comfortable from that position?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm done.
Hi there.
Hi.
So I'm gonna piggyback on what Preston kinda asked, but mine is more on a personal level. So say a business or organization wants to come into town that you may not morally agree with or ethically agree with, how are you gonna react to this situation and why?
Well, like I said before, my personal bias shouldn't be brought into anything. I may view something and if there's a rule or regulation that states that the business can or cannot be there, then it has to be followed. Or if there's a way that you can, if it's not allowed, then you address it and say why. See if there's a way that things can work. Or if the regulation's outdated, maybe it just needs to be revisited. So I don't feel like personal bias belongs in politics, really. I mean, everybody has their own views, but in this position, I think you're just following the rules. Thank you.
Okay, I got two questions. First of all, what do you feel is the most important thing in your mind with regards to the Planning Commission?
Well, just upholding the rules that are in place. And if something is incorrect or if something needs to be changed, it's focusing on how to develop a plan to get that done.
My second one is, you know, I don't like the word roadblocks. I know the builders, everybody uses roadblocks that we have in front of them, but it's like the mayor said, we have regulations. And our regulations are there for a purpose, okay? I don't have a problem with looking at solving those regulations if it's possible, but I don't consider them a roadblock. Why do you use the term when you're talking about other people coming in here? Why do you use the term, or would you use the term roadblock as you look at it?
I would just say past history of having to deal with those certain things in my job. I mean, I've personally had them and I've also seen other businesses come in and, and they've had hurdles that have hindered their coming here or opening. And, and it really, I mean, it affects them, like on a, on a pretty big scale sometimes. So seeing that the city's gonna move forward in a direction where it may be more helpful to those people is interesting.
Well, you know, as a member of the Planning Commission, I would think it would be your responsibility when someone comes with what they call a roadblock, for you to look at our regulations and explain to them that basically what you as a Planning Commission member are doing is following those regulations that we have in place. And if there's a way to work around them, then we'll look at it. And just get away from the word roadblock. You know, that's, that's a very negative thing. And, and that doesn't help growth anyway. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Are there any other questions from council? Okay, thank you so much. We appreciate it. We're gonna switch you guys out.
Thanks, Shran.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your application and for your time tonight.
You're welcome.
We're very excited to have you here and to have the opportunity to get to know you a little bit better. So if you just wanna take a minute or two to introduce us to yourself?
Sure.
And maybe tell us why you're interested in being on the Planning Commission? And then we'll ask you some questions.
Okay. Well, I'm Paula Shugley. I have been a resident here in Canyon City. It'll be 47 years. In April, I raised my children here who have, or Andy, my husband, and I have, we've been, will have been married 51 years next week.
Congratulations.
So, thank you. But anyway, this has been a fabulous community to raise the children. And they've all gone on to be educated. They're all serving very well in their communities as, from a professor to a nurse and a teacher. And the pride I have for Canyon City, I think those that know me, it is so true to my heart. I have been a career businesswoman most all of these years. And if you've read my letter, you can see it's kind of extensive of everything I've done. And in many different ways of utilizing my talents, from marketing, advertising, sales, and just good old common knowledge, I, I've been blessed with that ability to, to solve problems, to be able to see a need, fulfill that need, work with a coalition, or be it volunteers, which I have in many of my, my business opportunities. But I have been able to utilize my talents to the best for the community because I have been able to engage them in leadership. And that is something that I have felt very good about because of, and there again, I don't wanna elaborate on anything, but if you've read it, I am still very involved in volunteer services. In fact, I'm just now getting ready to go on a couple of new volunteer advocate positions, which I don't ever feel will interview or interfere with any of my, any of the sources that I would need to do to fulfill this position, because I know it'll take a lot of time. I took this very seriously. I Googled, did a lot of Googling to see about other communities and how much time was involved and also to see what was expected and what were the qualifications to serve. I am not a Realtor. I have no real estate experience. I have a lot of, I think, I think Preston can allude to, he knows that I get down deep and dig and, and I, I really do pursue when I feel something is needed right or needed to be researched. But based on all of that, is what I was reading, it also takes people are able to work hand in hand and be a good speaker, be confident, to be able to research and be able to relate with the people of our community. I, I do feel that I have that great common sense, the good base of what is needed, even though I do not have some of that real estate experience or whatever former development that would be needed. But in all the areas I have worked in, the Chamber of FEDC and then going on into the other boards here in Canyon City and helping with budgets and working with the fundraising and trying to figure out what is the best way to, to pursue that need. I mean, I always feel where there's a will, there's a way. I am not a cup half-empty person. It's half-full, all the way. And I think that's just the, the qualifications are just, that's it. That's me. That's who I am. And you can ask questions and maybe I'm not answering the right of what you have, but I have a heart for this community. And it's, it's, I think, shown through all of my hard work in career and in volunteerism.
Thank you so much. We're gonna go ahead and ask you some questions. We're gonna start on this side and work our way down.
Paula, good to see you.
Hi.
I know you've, you're probably one of the most active people in this community that I've ever known and had the pleasure to work with.
Thank you.
Your background is something else. It's phenomenal. Although, you're a busy gal. You've got a lot of stuff going on. Are you gonna be able to have the time to put this into your calendar? And then also, the backgrounds that you've had, I'm sure will be beneficial. But it's a kind of a different ballgame when we're looking at the Planning Commission meeting. So do you see whether or not you would have any real stumbling blocks dealing with how the Planning Commission functions?
I have given that a lot of thought, clear up to the minute I walked in here and I was engaged in the last of your meeting. As for time, I haven't, time has never been a barrier for me. In all of my jobs, paid 40 hours, work 70. You know that from the abbey, the hospital and so on. I should still be working because that is a need that I have, is to continue serving. But most to know me, I had a couple of very serious back surgeries. So I could no longer keep up the capacity of where, what I was doing at the hospital. So I retired. So I guess you'd say I became a full-time volunteer. And I do. I play for churches on Sundays. I mean, I am just a very busy person, but I'm so dedicated to what I do. Sure, Andy and I travel, but we don't do any excessive traveling beyond a week or two here. We're not those retired people that get in the RV and head south for six months. So I schedule things around that. As for your second question, I know it's a different ballgame. And that's kind of what makes it exciting to me, because I love to research, I love to study and just learn more. I am a person who reads papers from front to back. I, I just, I really, really like to know what's going on and to be a part of it if I can. So I don't see it as a challenge for me. You know, I don't know how you see it, but I am not worried about that aspect at all.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Hi, Paula.
Hi.
What do you see as the vision of the Planning Commission? And how do you view your role as moving forward? I see the vision of the Planning Commission as, basically, you have the front step hurdle that you, that the Planning Commission has to go through a lot to, to hear the people and to be able to be genuinely concerned, because they're concerned. They're bringing it to you. And if it's, if it's something that is sincerely a problem for them, then I think that no rolling of the eyes and like, oh my goodness, no. It's, they're real. They're here because of that. So as what I see so far and from what I've read, that that is a very important position to be able to be the liaison between the people and all of the, what you all have to do then too. I look at it as it's a lot of homework, a lot of, of work that we have to do outside of your, your scope of getting down and dirty and, and trying to bring you the answers and, and suggestions and, and get in the trenches with these people if we need to. So with that being said, say it's an organization or a business that you may not ethically or morally believe or agree with, how would you handle that situation? Oh, that, that doesn't even concern me. I am, I, I feel I am so fair and so nonjudgmental about that, that like I said, it, I think I could be true to who I am and true to what you need to have me be doing for you. Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
My turn. Hi, Paula. This is tough on me. I've known Paula probably for 40 of the years, so.
Well, Riddler, have some fun.
Have some fun, yeah. So she's, since she's been here 47 years and you're not quite 50, that's interesting.
Yeah, right. And you were a pup when we were together on the chamber boards and stuff.
I swear, so. You, the only thing that, and it's not a concern, it's just a, and a question, is you have been so valuable, lots of these organizations, and some of them will have to come in, in front of you. Do you feel that, I know you've answered Dolly's question real well.
Yes.
Now, think about the fact that some of them will come in before you and you'll have to make maybe some tough decisions. Can you handle that?
You know, that, that is not, I can tell you that is not a problem from experience. Because of some of the boards that I have been on.
Sure.
I've had to be the person true to the purpose of what I'm serving. And one of the examples especially, and it happens over and over, I work with so many nonprofits. And I've been on the, the VALE board, which is out through the DA's program where all the money is decided, you know, that comes in from the court costs, the perpetrators, what they pay, so on. And we decide for all of this judicial area where the monies go. Very, very important to these, especially the small, the small places such as Loves and Fish, well, Loves and Fish isn't one of the smaller ones. Let's say to Rocky Mountain Behavior Health or the Women's Shelter or something. And they come in with their pleas and their budgets and what they have done for fundraising, maybe to raise equitable funds to go and be part of their buy, or their, their cash-in on this or, and I have to be very true. I look at those just as my counterparts do. When it comes to, I give my input and what I really, really feel, of course, I step out. If I'm on that board, I step out and I do not vote on it. But I, I have never seen that as a problem. I'm just, I'm very open, very open to it and understand that there will be those problems. I think the boards that I'm on right now shouldn't be too much of a, too mu, I mean, I, I'm not sure what you read into that, but I can't see it being much of a conflict.
Well, it's just that there, you've been through a lot and been with them.
Oh, yeah.
And you're not, are you using your RV in May? No, I'm just.
Actually, I don't think so.
Oh, well.
Yeah. It's always hooked up and ready. Send your company.
Thank you. That's, thank you.
Paula, one of my questions is, how many City Council meetings or Planning Commission meetings have you attended in the past 12 months?
Oh, gosh. I've been building a house in the past 12 months, but I have probably only been, you've seen me speak at a couple of them. So I think only three, four, maybe four. And that's all. Which I apologize for. I have been very busy. And then we have traveled, done some traveling in the past year.
Are you familiar with the master plans on the, for the city and, or, that we have, such as the River Quarter Plan, the Highway 50 Quarter Plan?
Right, right. I read everything you all put out. I'll just say that. I do read it and then I will go and Google more. I, no problem. So if there's more, then there is the educational piece of which I would have to pursue fervently. But as for what you have put out on everything, yes, I have followed those.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Paula.
Hi.
How are you doing?
I'm good.
Thank you for coming tonight and thank you for putting your letter of interest in.
You're welcome.
Have you raised children?
Have I raised children? Oh, yes. The three.
Have you established rules of conduct for your children?
Oh, gosh, yes.
A, a lot of times on the Planning Commission, what you're acting as is judge and jury.
I understand.
Thank you.
I understand. Grandchildren too, I might say.
Hi, Paul.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm good.
My commenter question kind of follows up with John's in that the work that, that you do on the Commission comes before council.
Mm-hmm.
And we really can't collaborate or have discussions about a lot of those issues because of the way the process works.
Mm-hmm.
But there are times when we don't agree with your decisions.
Mm-hmm.
How, how would you deal with those things?
I, first of all, I don't take it personally. What I will know by the time we got to that point is that hopefully I and, and the others, counterparts, have worked very hard to do our homework and to be as, to be as informed that we possibly can be, so that I know that by the time we got to your point, you know, when we're at that next point with you, as a council, that we've done our best. And we will just be there to answer your questions and try to tell you why we felt as we did. But I, there again, I don't see a barrier with it. It would not be difficult to relinquish that of what was in my heart, you know, to you all and say. all and say, you know best, it is your final decision. We did our homework.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
You mentioned earlier that you had done some research online about how other communities do planning, and I wondered if you saw anything in your research that you thought Canyon City should consider adopting?
Well, I am a person that has never believed in inventing the wheel. I love to go and be a part of something that's successful and bring those ideas back into, if it's a business that I actually own and managing, or some of the volunteer service advocacy that I do. So, with that in mind, I would continue to scope that out, but as for things right now that I saw, I was so, I was more into the subcategories of qualifications, what is involved, you know, those things to make sure I felt good about what I was up here standing in front of you for. So, I'm, I, there would be absolutely no hurdles to continue to look. I love to share great information and good ideas, be a part of things that are good.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I think our interview is done.
Okay.
We are going, should we go ahead and call both of them in, and then we're going to cast our votes? So, you can go ahead and take a seat. You can sit up here in the front if you wish.
All right, we don't get to go home, and you just call us.
Nope. I think Tony, does he?
Here.
The release disappeared.
Oh, we vote for one, huh?
Do you need a piece of paper?
Did you vote yours?
Yes.
Jen won the prank. She's nodding off.
Jen, Frank.
How are you? How was your day? The day? These are votes.
Those are votes. Those are votes.
Well, I gave you one.
Um, did you guys put your name on your vote?
Oh.
Did you put your name on your vote?
Oh, no.
No.
You have to own it.
Yours was the full sheet.
Jim's going to see my vote now.
No, I don't.
It has public record.
Yes, sir. I didn't look. Notice that.
Um, is this yours, Preston? Let's make sure we have everyone's name. Okay, the tally is in, and the vote has been unanimous for Paula. Congratulations, Paula. We welcome you to the Planning Commission.
Thank both, thanks to both of you guys.
Make sure we thank both of you for your time.
Both of you, very much.
And encourage you to keep being active in, in the city government and hope that you join one of our committees and work your way in.
Thanks, Shara.
Thank you.
So, the city staff will get ahold of you on our upcoming meetings and when you'll be sworn in.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're looking forward to working with you.